I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 2013 City Council meeting. Let's rise and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, you were previously distributed a copy of the minutes of the October, the first city council meeting. Good. I have a motion to annull.
I approve that. I motion that we adopt the accepted minutes from the October city council meeting. I second.
Motion, let me second by Ms. Chapman. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? And then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved unanimously. There was not time to distribute the meeting, the public hearing minutes to you, so I'm going to ask the city clerk to read them at this time.
City of Craperville Public Hearing, October 29, 2013. A public hearing was held on Tuesday, October 29, 2013, at 7:00 PM to discuss the proposed budget for 2014. Present for the hearing was Mayor Milner, Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, Council Persons, Ms. Valeria Bowman, Ms. Vivian Stewart, and Ms. Josephine Chapman. The hearing was called to order by Mayor Milner. All stood for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mayor Milner stated that the proposed budget had been advertised in the Advocate Democrat for the past two weeks. It has been available in the city clerk's office for inspection during that time. The clerk was asked if there had been anyone to come in to view the proposed budget. The answer was no. The mayor explained that the budget was essentially the same as this year's with the exception of public safety. After amendments, the budget for the current year was $43,000 and the proposed new budget for 2014 is $46,000. This is based on the sheriff's request that he be reimbursed at a rate of $2,200 per month plus any other expenditures related to public safety. Mayor Milner opened the hearing for public discussion. No one in the audience or council members had any questions or comments. Mayor Milner stated that the legal obligations had been fulfilled. The public hearing was closed and the meeting was adjourned.
Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Then I request a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing.
I motion that we approve the minutes of the public hearing.
Motion by Ms. Chapman, seconded by Mr. Chapman. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. Moving on with the agenda of public request. Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Milner, has Mark accepted the patrol into the city yet?
He has never signed the agreement, no.
Okay, so that means since Brady has quit, it's been about five months, that we've had no police and that it's been approximately $10,000 that the city has not had to spend. Couldn't that money be took and applied to the mortgage rate and get our taxes back down some more?
That was considered for the length of time that we knew he wasn't, had not worked or not been covered, had already been factored into the budget that we adopted before we set the minutes rate. Of course, it's been now been an extra month since that time, and that does mean there will be a small surplus, but the tax bills are going out this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so it's too late to make any further changes to the minutes rate for the current fiscal year.
But it could be made for next year.
If there is a surplus to, that the council wishes to use to reduce the requirement, yes.
Something needs to be done to get our mortgage rate way on down. I've been checking with other cities around, we are way too high on our mortgage rates for very good.
Other cities have commercial properties that are actively engaged in commerce and it's just a fact of economic life. If you don't have businesses that pay taxes and make very few tax demands, then the burden is going to fall on the homeowners, and that's means that the mortgage rate is going to be higher.
Well, if we don't get our mortgage rate down, there's no way to draw any of your businesses.
Unfortunately, it's, you can't run a city without money.
No, sir, you can't, but you can't run it with taxes and everybody dead.
Any other public request? Moving on, the mayor's report. Council members, over the last couple of months, I have met with Chairman Ware of the County Commission and with Ms. Linda Garabas of the Regional Commission, talking about the concept of trying to secure community development block grants separately for the city and the county to be dispersed to homeowners whose homes need rehabilitation. And this can, there is a particular community development block grant that is available and if a home and the homeowner qualify, then the grant funds can be dispersed or dispensed to each homeowner to bring their property up to current standards. Mr. Ware clearly wants to go ahead with it in the county. Whether we want to do it in the city or not is up to you. The lady from the Regional Commission has looked over our community and she feels that the area of MLK from down about Commerce Street, owned up somewhere toward Friendship Church, has a number of homeowner occupied dwellings that would qualify for rehabilitation and would be able to obtain grant from. But it takes a more detailed study, of course, than she has done, and to do the study and submit the application, which is, would cost $3,000. There's no guarantee if we spend the money that we would be approved. As you know, in past years when we were trying to get rehabilitation money for our system, some years we submitted our application and we didn't make the cut. So, we might not make the cut if we go forward with this. But the question I have for you tonight is, do you feel that there's enough need in our community to make the effort to get the grant funds and see if we can go forward with rehabilitating some of the homes up in that area?
Talking just that area over citywide, I'm trying to believe.
Well, it's going to have to be a focused area. They don't like to just shotgun it if they want to. Try to get a contained area and, I mean, if there's other pockets, you don't have to have everything in one pocket. You can have more than one grouping.
So, we can designate an area, but we still start to use the citywide along with they fit into the guidelines.
Yeah, well, once, but once she does the study, it's going to be limited to the area studied, so if you feel there are some particular pockets that need, that should be included in the study, if we go forward, then we want to point those out to her because she's very flexible and, well, the effort will be focused, but, but once it gets into the documentation, then it's going to become a cast in concrete.
Any particular kind of, would be due to the, who hasn't though? What in particular kind of would be up to the places, or did they have anything?
They would do anything from just, you know, a new roof, work on foundations to virtually rebuilding the whole building.
But if we get it in some target area of the city, then you know the other people, somebody else over here may need it, and then you know they ain't in the target area and they can't get it? That's why they say we need to put it in, suggest the areas that we want it in.
Right.
So, it can be in the language of documents.
I've gone over that, we can, but no guarantee.
That we don't, to look at.
Now, we don't have this proposed in our 2014 budget that we've got before us tonight, but there's ample time to make, to amend the budget if this is the way you want to go between now and April, which is, because we don't have to pay until they actually submit the proposal. And it's possible that we have reserve funds that we can get $3,000 from and not have to make any major change in the funding that we have to raise.
And the people that have to come through and they apply, would they enjoy any kind of money or they just, if they qualified, they get to work free?
Basically, yes. Now, we will have other contributions. They won't be financial, but we'll have the city workers that have to do inspection work. We'll have people who will have to go out in the community and get, do income surveys for the properties that are in question. I'll say they'll have to declare what their annual income is so that I can just demonstrate that they are qualified to receive the grant funds.
How soon will we have to, I know you said Commerce Street, MLK, but if we have some dilapidated houses back over here, I know I seen some, right? Can we?
I probably got about two, three weeks before she comes, but she's, she's going to come and Bobby Jones and Charles Green, who were involved in the identifying the properties back when the religious group came in and did, did so much work up through that. They have agreed to come and share their knowledge, whatever it is, with them, but any pockets that you know of, let me know about them, certainly by our next meeting, sooner than possible. Well, if you think you want to go forward with this, I ask that you authorize me to sign this letter of agreement with the Regional Commission or the, yeah?
I motion that we authorize you, the mayor, to sign this letter of agreement with the Regional Commission for the community block grant.
Okay, motion by Ms. Stewart, seconded by Mr. Chapman.
And can I ask that if anybody know of anybody that got dilapidated housing, that they try to contact some of us so we can make sure them houses, that area is added to that list of anybody that might know of anybody's house? So, we can mark that area so she can look at that as well.
All right. Any other discussion?
What kind, they have somebody coming in to do the work, or they're going to try to get somebody local, or who will be?
I don't know. I can, when she gets, gets to working on the finalized and the details of this thing, I will get her to come up to one of our meetings and fill you in on, she's, she's stated her willingness to come at any time, but I felt that, until I was sure that she wanted to move forward with this, that wasn't any need to ask her to make that safari up here from Augusta for an evening meeting. Any other discussions? Call roll on the motion.
On the motion, Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. That's all I have on mayor's report today. Moving on to national reports. The first sheet you have before you is the ballot sheet indicates the funds that we have available as of the end of September. We are adequately funded to meet our needs. Moving to the first, the third page, which is the overall view of the general fund, expenditures through the month of September. Our total income is 26,000 less than expected. This is the deposit that we get from the State Insurance Commissioner, and it will be in next month's budget view. Just a little, I guess I was anticipating it a little earlier than he chose to send it in setting that. All the expenditures, personnel costs, we're right on the money. $10 difference between the budget and the actual. Purchasing contracted services is under run by $4,500. Our supplies have overrun by $1,400. Under the capital outweigh, purchased Larry a new pickup, $1,400, and the other costs have under run by $4,700, so. We are in, pretty much in, within the budget. The next page, page one, it shows the general government expenditures, and it's pretty much right on the money. The next one is the judicial expenditures, and the judge hadn't had anything to do, but we had to keep his training up, so basically is what you see. Public safety. We are under running that because the sheriff has never signed the agreement, so there are no payments have been made. Public works have under run by about $3,000. The Carson Recreational expenditures, right on the nose. Next is the ballot sheet for the enterprise fund. The funds we have on hand, in good financial condition, so in a position to meet our obligations. First is the solid waste. Revenue and expense budget. Cost of services, charges for services, this is the revenues that we perceive have been $700 less than the budget. The expenses have been $800 more than the budget, so bottom line, about $1,500 more than the budget. Costs. Water and so on. The total income has been about $1,200 less than the budget. The expenses have been $1,500 more than the budget. Bottom line is slight increase in the, cost above the budget levels. Now, this is for the enterprise fund. We did not adopt an amended budget, which would true up through the first months of the year. That is on tonight's agenda. So, this is against the original budget that we adopted back last November, whereas the one for the, the general fund that you looked at earlier, that is measured against the revised budget that we adopted about a month ago. This will look, the expense budget for the, for the enterprise operations will look better next month with the up-to-date amendment being in effect and being, and measuring against it. Are there any questions on the financial side? Move on to new business then. The first item on new business is Resolution 2013-006. A resolution of the City of Craperville, Georgia, to provide for the adoption of a budget amendment containing estimates of revenue and expenditure changes for the fiscal year 2013, beginning January 1, 2013, and ending December 31, 2013. This amends both the enterprise budget, which is attached to the document, and it also makes small amendments to the general fund budget because of the fact that we have to support garbage collection with a contribution from the. with a contribution from the the general fund. We just, our fees for garbage collection are not enough to cover the cost of garbage collection. And if we raise the fees, we lose more customers, which means the fees still won't be enough. And, uh, last year we had to subsidize the, uh, cost of garbage collection with a contribution from the general fund, and this year we're gonna have to do it again.
What's the method they use for charging? Do they charge about a can they empty or just a set?
Well, the contract guarantees a minimum of three hundred cans, and we're down, we're, we're paying for three hundred cans. But on top of that, they get to add a full, a fuel surcharge. And that's something that they compute statewide on a regular basis. And, uh, if the, uh, if the cost of fuel has gone up, that goes up. If the cost of fuel has gone down, that does come down, but it sure seems like it cuts down a lot slower than it goes up. The, uh, the resolution says, whereas the mayor and city council have determined that revenues from some sources will be less than the amounts budgeted for the current year, and the mayor and city council have reviewed the expenditures today and determined that reductions in the remaining months, months budget will not impair service to the public. Now therefore be it ordered by the mayor and city council that the revenues and expenditures of the government and its activities for the fiscal year beginning January one, that should be corrected to say twenty thirteen and ending December thirty-one, twenty thirteen. The amounts in the following sections are hereby amended. General government, uh, revenues, there would be no change. Water and sewer revenues are reduced from two hundred and one thousand to one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Solid waste revenues are reduced from previously approved thirty-eight thousand to thirty-seven thousand. The contributions from reserve funds are increased from three thousand to twenty-three thousand. The total revenues increased from four hundred and sixty-two to four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The expenditures, the general government, there's no change. Judicial, no change. Culture recreation, no change. Public safety is being reduced from forty-five thousand to forty-three thousand. It's just taking advantage of one of those months that we didn't pay the sheriff. Use the money that we save there elsewhere. Public works, no change. Water and sewer from two hundred and one thousand to one hundred and ninety-six thousand. Capital outlay for water and sewer from zero to twenty-three thousand. Solid waste from forty-one thousand to forty-two thousand. Total expenditures in four hundred and sixty-two thousand to four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The capital outlay is basically, we had to finally pay the county for the reconstruction of the, uh, the wellhouse down, uh, on Commerce Street. The results of the changes in general government budget are shown in the attached revised two thousand thirteen budget pages, which are part of this resolution. The general government subsidy of the cost of collecting solid waste has been increased by two thousand dollars to cover the expected difference between solid waste revenues and expenses. Public safety expenses have been reduced by two thousand to provide the funds. Capital funds to rebuild wellhouse number one and to begin the encapsulation of the old sewage treatment pond have been added and funded from water and sewer reserve funds. All resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Previously proved month by month expenditure projections are hereby adjusted to reflect current knowledge. Well, that's my recommendation to you. The details, as I said, are spelled out in the papers, uh, attached to the budget. Could I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero six?
I motion that we adopt Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero six.
I second.
Motion by Ms. Stewart, second by Ms. Chapman. Could I have a motion to amend the resolution by changing the reference in section one from this January one, twenty twelve, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twelve, to January one, twenty thirteen, and ending December thirty-one, twenty thirteen?
I motion that we make the change to the date from the year twenty twelve to the year twenty thirteen, January through December, in Resolution two zero one three dash zero zero six.
Amendment by Ms. Stewart is there second to the amendment?
I second.
Second by Ms. Chapman. We're voting on the amendment, not the main motion. All in favor of the amendment to make this, basically is a correction of type O, typographical error. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The amendment is adopted. Now, is there any discussion on the main motion? Call roll on the motion to adopt Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero six.
In reference to Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero six, Ms. Chapman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. The resolution is adopted unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero seven. A resolution of the City of Craperville, Georgia, adopting a general operations budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty fourteen. Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero seven, whereas the mayor has prepared and submitted to the city council a budget for the year beginning January one, twenty fourteen, and ending December thirty-one, twenty fourteen. And whereas the mayor and city council have studied and revised the proposed budget, it is considered in the best interest of the City of Craperville to adopt it. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council that the budget attached here too, and summarized below, for the year beginning January twenty, January one, twenty fourteen, and ending December thirty-one, twenty fourteen, is approved. The general government revenues, two hundred and eight thousand dollars. General government expenditures, one eighteen thousand. Judicial, five thousand. Culture recreation, nine thousand. Solid waste, five thousand. Public safety, forty-six hundred. Public works, twenty-five hundred, for a total of two hundred and eight thousand. This is a portion of the budget that we had the, uh, public hearing on last week. And, uh, it is now before the council.
I motion that we adopt Resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero zero seven.
Motion by Ms. Chapman, is there second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Is there any discussion on the budget? Call roll.
Concerning Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero seven, Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes. The resolution is adopted unanimously. Next is Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero eight. A resolution of the City of Craperville, Georgia, adopting an enterprise operations budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand fourteen. Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero eight, whereas the mayor has prepared and submitted to the city council a budget for the year beginning January the one, twenty five, January one, twenty fourteen, and ending December thirty-one, twenty fourteen. And whereas the mayor and city council have studied and revised the proposed budget, it is considered in the best interest of the City of Craperville to adopt it. Therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council that the budget attached here too, and summarized below, for the year beginning January one, twenty fourteen, and ending December thirty-one, twenty fourteen, is approved. Revenues from general government, five thousand dollars. Solid waste, thirty-eight thousand. And water and sewer, two hundred and one thousand. Expenditures. Solid waste, forty-three thousand. Water and sewer, two hundred and one thousand. Both the revenues and expenditures sum to two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This is the other portion of the budget that we held a public hearing on last week. And it is now before the council. Do I have a motion?
I motion to adopt Resolution two zero one three dash zero zero eight.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, second by Ms. Stewart. Any discussion? Call roll on the motion to adopt.
Concerning Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero zero eight, Mr. Chapman, how do you say?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Resolution is adopted unanimously. Council members, that concludes the items on the agenda. Do any of you have anything?
The mayor of Thompson invited some of us to join them in the meeting for the Better Hometown Communities. And I said I might say that he was all about it, and I thought, hopefully something to help out you.
I think that's that outfit that, um, we had the meeting on, and those ladies came in and talked to us. And they want you to employ a person.
You can employ an employee. I know they will say, I know they did a lot while they were talking about the, um, University of Georgia would come in, but we had University of Georgia, when they come in to try to help us make our town look better when we did the economic leadership, Talia Faro over here, through, uh, Family Connection. And they came up with so many designs, and that was when we started doing the decoration of downtown, so.
By all means, go and see what you can take away from it, but, uh, we decided that we couldn't pull it when.
I know they can employ, employ you, but not at all.
They want you to have a local person that's on duty available. Anything else? And do I hear a motion?
I motion to adjourn, I second.
This motion, this meeting is adjourned.